All right, it is 6:00 PM on this December 10th. And I will call this town council meeting to order. Recognize there's a quorum present. And welcome all those in attendance. This is the last meeting of the calendar year and it's nice to look out and see a bunch of folks in the, in the crowd. We appreciate you being here and I appreciate those who are tuned in online as well. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Parrott. Mr. Yolan.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Harding.
Here.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have the invocation, which I will lead. You're welcome to join if so inclined, or not to if so inclined. And then Vice Mayor Reed will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. If there are no changes, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Next up is a declaration of personal interest. Do we have anyone on the diocese wishes to make a declaration of personal interest concerning anything on the agenda this evening? Not hearing any. We'll move on to a presentation. We have a presentation to start the evening from the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. Who do we have speaking? Taylor Fisher with Department of Criminal Justice Services.
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, speak right into the microphone there, so we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Fisher. I am an accreditation coordinator with the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. On May 13th, we sent a team of three assessors to the Farmville Police Department to complete an in-depth evaluation. When I say an in-depth evaluation, I mean a three-day event where they reviewed administration, operations, training, and personnel. They thoroughly reviewed files, conducted a ride-along, interviewed people within and outside of the agency, and inspected all items that fell within those categories, to include areas such as property and evidence, and their equipment. Accreditation in the Commonwealth of Virginia is a voluntary program, and that means that an agency must meet 193 standards. Within those 193 standards, there are almost 600 individual bullet points. And that's quite a bit. Currently, there are only 115 agencies who have achieved accreditation out of the 400 that are eligible. Think about that, you know? To voluntarily allow assessors to come in and evaluate your operations and your agency, and that means a lot. That means a lot about transparency and a lot about dedication to excellence and professionalism. It's not easy work, it's committed work. Those assessors noted several important things during the assessment process that really stood out to them. They noted that all interactions with members of the Farmville Police Department staff were professional, courteous, and knowledgeable. They said that members of the agency were forthcoming with information and more than willing to elaborate on agency operations. That's transparent. And lastly, they said that it's evident that the Farmville Police Department is committed to providing the highest level of quality services to their community. The Farmville Police Department welcomed the assessment team. They welcomed the assessment, and they were very open to everything that went forth. They found that the police department was operating with the highest quality that they could possibly be, and they achieved accreditation. I want to commend Chief Ellington and his staff on what they have done, and I am honored to present this fourth award of accreditation on behalf of the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission to the Farmville Police Department. So, you did great work. And then I think, if you guys would like, we'll take a photo. Yep. Do a bit of a front.
They did the hard work.
Yeah, really. Yeah, really.
Oh, yeah, everybody get on with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to acknowledge Sam Bowles. Some of you may not realize who Sam is, but Sam is our accreditation manager for the department, and a lot of, you know, this presentation tonight is because of the work that he's put forward and helping us maintain our accreditation status. And we got accredited back in 2012-ish. I forget, it's been a while now, but the first time, one of the things they told us, yeah, it's hard to get accredited, it's harder to keep it. And I'm proud to say that the Farmville Police Department is, we've maintained our accreditation since that initial accreditation so long ago. And that comes a lot of teamwork. It's not just Sam, or the chief, or myself, or command staff. It's our team, the officers that are putting in the work. That's what they're being graded on, and they're checking those proofs, they're checking the officers' work. So it's them, it's finance, we're getting proofs from them, we're getting proofs from public works, making sure the generators are working behind the building. So it's generally, genuinely, a team effort. And I want to thank you guys and previous councils for providing the resources that we need to maintain that accreditation, because it's not always cheap. So, thank you.
Thank you, Captain. And I know Chief is sorry to miss this occasion, but it's a testament to the, to the whole police force, and I know it's one, once again, another one of those rare moments where I think I can speak for everybody up here, and we're proud to have y'all. Thank you for, for what you do for our community. Next up on the agenda, we have public hearings, and the first public hearing is Resolution Number 2025-1201, an amendment to the conditional use permit that was approved in January 2025 to allow for an additional two mini warehouses, self-storage buildings, and the removal of the one-acre outdoor parking storage area. Do we have anyone signed up to speak, Ms. McKay?
No, sir.
All right. We'll close that public hearing. Next public hearing is Resolution Number 2025-1202, to rescind current lease and enact a new land lease for tenants of the Farmville Regional Airport. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on that, Ms. McKay?
Morgan Donovan.
Thank you, welcome, Morgan.
Good evening, Council. Have to bear with me, I left my glasses in the truck. I think I'll muddle through. Appreciate the offer. Anyways, first of all, you've all got a standing invitation to go for an airplane ride whenever you want it, give me a holler. Mr. Hunter, you remember, I've offered you a bunch of them, you haven't taken me up yet? Okay. Anyways, for the most part, this proposed lease is a little better than the existing one. I've got, I've got two issues with it, and a lot of the other tenants have the same issue, and they're not here tonight, but they said you're going to speak, so here I am. In Article One, the term, what happens after 20 years? According to Cumberland County, the hangars are real estate, and they will continue to exist beyond the term, post-lease. Can we and our assigns negotiate a new lease when that time comes? It speaks that we can sell it to the town or a third party, but it doesn't speak of we being able to renegotiate another lease for ourselves for another 20 years. Sarah Palmer flew out there at the airport until she was 94. Sid Newman, I believe, he flew till he was 89. I'm only 61, I'll have several more years of flying beyond the 20-year lease, I hope. Article Four of the insurance. If we're given the option to remove all improvements to the parcel, in the last paragraph of Article One, and we've named the town an additional insured to a $250,000 policy already, why do we have to ensure the replacement value of the structure and its contents? Why in the world do y'all care about the replacement value of the contents in our hangar? As I've shared with Mr. Davis previously in some emails regarding this subject, the hangar structure has little, if any, relative value. The whole of the value of the lease title or right to be on the airport is simply the right to a private spot of ground within the confines of the airport. That is the value, period. Additionally, a little bit off-subject, but myself and several other of the tenants out at the airport, we have talked amongst ourselves that we are willing to form a cooperative to operate and manage the airport for y'all, so you can wash your hands of the management aspect of it. We'll take care of that ourselves, and we've got the experience to do it. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McKay, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Yes, absolutely.
I apologize to Ms. McKay, I missed the sign-up sheet. May I speak on behalf of Dr. Wills?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jamie Weisgarver, I'm with the law firm of Herschler, and I represent Dr. James Wills. Just wanted to make a couple comments with respect to the lease, if I may. Dr. Wills had a couple concerns, one of which echoes what Mr. Morgan just said. I'd like to address first the 60-day edit to Article One. Our preference would be to leave that at 180 days. This was a change that was recommended by my colleague, Mr. Kragel, working with the town's attorney. That change was not accepted, but we think it's appropriate to leave it at 180 days, just to provide the parties with additional time to negotiate. As someone who is involved in a fair number of settlement discussions, these things take more time than you would ever think that they might, and so building in a little bit of an additional buffer seems prudent, in Dr. Wills's view. The second comment is also, again, as Mr. Morgan stated, with respect to the insurance requirement in Article Four, specifically the requirement that the town has included for a commercial general liability policy. Dr. Wills would echo the concern that the contents of the hangar are his to replace or not, as he chooses to see fit. And it seems to us that the, that the insurance that's already built in, the insurance requirement, I should say, that's already built into the lease, provides sufficient protection for, you know, any property damage. Additionally, you know, we were taking a look at Dr. Wills's policy briefly before we came over here, the aircraft liability policy, and that does seem to have some protections built in for property damage, which may address the town's concerns on that element. Of course, that's just his policy, every insurance policy is going to be different, but the point being, that additional CGL coverage just may not be necessary. That's all I have. Thank you, and I apologize for missing the sign-up sheet again.
No problem, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, we'll close that public hearing, we'll move to public hearing. Solicited proposal from English Construction, Mosley Architects, a private entity for the expansion of the Farmville Fire Station, submitting it in accordance with the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act. Anybody signed up to speak, Ms. McKay?
No, sir.
Anybody missed to sign up? All right. We'll close that public hearing, we'll move to public hearing. Solicited proposal from English Construction, Mosley Architects, a private entity for the expansion of the Farmville Fire Station, submitting it in accordance with the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act. Anybody signed up to speak, Ms. McKay?
No, sir.
Anybody missed to sign up? All right. We'll close that public hearing, and we'll move to public comment period, general public comment period. Ms. McKay, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. We'll close public comment period and move to the consent agenda. You have the draft minutes of the 2025 11-12 regular council meeting before you. If there are no changes to those minutes, do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, finance report. Ms. Julie Moore is going to present the November 2025 finance report.
Good evening. For November, we earned $12,609 at VIP. At Benchmark, we earned $2,204, and then at LGIP, we earned $26,914. So in total, we earned $41,727 in November. And I looked, and so far, on our real estate taxes, we've collected 77%, and we still have some days to go, so that's a positive. And we paid for the fire truck, the ladder truck, last week, if I forgot to tell you, so.
Any questions for Ms. Moore at this time? Got anything else for us?
No, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion to accept the finance report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Now we'll roll into old business. First item up for discussion is stormwater and erosion and sediment control ordinance, which we discussed during a work session at a previous meeting. Do we have any additional information at this time, Mr. Davis?
If, the, the last thing we were going to work through is, in the document, our proposed fee compared to the other surrounding jurisdictions and some others like us, in size, and so I think you will see that actually ours is, our proposed, which is the top one, is less than or equal to the rest of those in the diagram.
On the land disturbance permit fee, are we similar to Prince Edward County in anything less than an acre?
They're right underneath us.
Yeah. I mean, do we have that same language about anything less than an acre?
Ours is 200 plus 15, so per acre or portion thereof, so it would be 200 a flat fee.
Even if, even if it was less than?
Yeah. And if you'll notice, they're the only ones that don't have a fee at all.
Any additional questions at this time concerning the stormwater fees? Not hearing any.
So I just need a consensus to move forward, to bring this, to leave as-is in the, in the ordinance and bring it for a public hearing in the future.
Everybody good? Public hearing, moving forward? Yes, yes, down this row?
So we'll have the public hearing after the two counties approve, get their governing bodies to allow.
Yep. So for anybody who was not here or watched those previous meetings, which you can go back and watch online, previously Cumberland and Prince Edward have handled these stormwater permitting processes for us. We now have the capability to do it ourselves, and so this would, this ordinance would give us the capability to do that and handle that in-house, hopefully making it somewhat cheaper and a little bit faster. Next up, request approval of Resolution Number 2025-1202 to rescind current lease and enact a new land lease for tenants of the Farmville Regional Airport. Any discussion at this time?
Yeah, I'll start. I, I, I did look at Article One, where it was talking about, I don't know if it was a typo, or whether it was meant to be 60 or 160, but it says 100 and, 160, and then it's got in parentheses, 60 days. And I'm, I'm in a, I don't have any issue with 180 days on that. I mean, it takes, if you're going to sell something, I'm not, I don't have an issue with it, but that's up to whoever or whatever, but it is definitely an error there. And I do want to hit on the other piece, the insurance. It's what I do every day. I've never seen a lease or a contract where they required you have property coverage or any kind of personal property coverage for contents on any lease or any, or any contract. And that's just what I've never seen. That's their business, that they have what they want, they can, it's their airplane, it's their tools, it's, you know, we're not going to be responsible for it, it's their building, and if they want to not have property coverage on it, that's on them, that's, I would always want to have it, but we should not require it. Liability for sure, I'm not so sure about the quarter million, I would personally want that to be a little higher. My minimums that I do for commercial insurance are a million in liability coverage, because airplanes can be expensive, we have a windstorm or something, or something happens, and it tear, your stuff tears up somebody else's stuff, it's, it could get pretty pricey, so that's just my two cents on those two items. Thanks.
Can I address them as we go? If that's helpful, if you don't mind. So, we had a million before in the previous contract, that was one of the arguments, or not arguments, the concerns, thank you, used my terms correctly, concerns of the tenants, is that the Commonwealth of Virginia only makes them have a policy of $250,000 on the aircraft. And so that's why we reduced it not more than when we had our meeting with, with the tenants, the owners of, of airplanes. In regards to the, the liability insurance on the hangars, myself, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Elder, but he's welcome to, to say his piece as well on this topic. In our conversation, the point of it is, is that from our, my, I won't conclude him on this, from my research, and, and you can help me with this, Mr. Hardy, is that for insurance for an aircraft, it is while it is in operation, and it covers the liability of the operation and anything that while it's operating, it may affect. If it is out in the air, and something happens in that hangar, and then ends up destroying the hangar next to it, then who's covering those hangars? That's the point in the coverage for the liability of it. It's not just for that tenant's hangar, but if that, they, they're all right next to each other in a row, some of them are in a, in a row, and then it messes up the person next door, and the next door to that one, then who's responsible for that damage? And so, that's the reason for the, the, the coverage of that. The 180 days, myself and Mr. Elder talked about this as well, if you read further, they have a certain amount of time to sell it, then there's a certain amount of time to negoti, well, first, negotiate with the town, then there's time in there to, to try to sell it. So in essence, if we went to 180 days and you had all the other days involved in there, that piece of property, if they don't renew their lease, would be sitting there free for six to eight months. So the more days we add, the longer it's not, it's not being rented. And so that's why we did not, when Mr. Kegel did do that in the, and, and that 160 may have been when Mr. Elder and I were going back and forth, and it was missed as far as changing it, because it was 60, and then Mr. Kegel had lined through it and put 180. That is the reason for those timeframes, is because if you add up the 60, and I, I could pull it up in front of me, but the other timeframes, so that we're not losing but so much lease payment on that hangar. So that's, those are the answers I have for those questions.
I'm going to go back to the, to the, then I'll go back to the insurance. It, I understand the liability, they need to have liability coverage, liability is liability, but this is saying that they have to have basically property coverage for the contents, and, and, and I can tell you, having it on a replacement cost basis for somebody else's stuff, that doesn't happen either. That would be astronomical, because if you have a 1973 Cessna, and it's worth $50,000, but you need to replace it with something that's current, and replace it hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's not, having it say that it's replacement cost basis, and for their, and also for their, for their contents, it's a little not clear, the liability coverage for somebody else's stuff, all it needs to be is liability. It does not need to talk about replacement costs or contents in any way, shape, or form, because the insurance companies on the liability side are going to cover somebody else's stuff on an actual cash value basis, they're not going to replace it. And also, you don't, I don't think we need to require anybody to have property coverage on their own stuff at all. And that's kind of how it leads me, is that we're requiring them to have property coverage on their own stuff.
You got anything to add there, Mr. Elder?
Yes, Gary.
I don't know that I have anything that's terribly substantive. I'll sort of echo what Dr. Davis said. We, we discussed this, and we've been dis-
If you read further, they have a certain amount of time to sell it. Then there's a certain amount of time to negoti, well, first negotiate with the town. Then there's time in there to, to try to sell it. So in essence, if we went to a hundred and eighty days and you add all the other days involved in there, that piece of property, if they don't renew their lease, would be sitting there free for six to eight months. So the more days we add, the longer it's not, it's not being rented. And so that's why we did not, when Mr. Cagle did do that in the, and, and that hundred and sixty may have been when Mr. Elder and I were going back and forth and it was missed as far as changing it, 'cause it was sixty, and then Mr. Cagle had lined through it and put a hundred and eighty. That is the reason for those timeframes, is because if you add up the sixty, and I, I could pull it up in front of me, but the other timeframes so that we're not losing but so much lease payment on that hangar. So that's, those are the answers I have for those questions.
I, I'm gonna go back to the, to the, then I'll go back to the insurance. It, I understand the liability. They need to have liability coverage. Liability is liability. But this is saying that they have to have basically property coverage for the contents. And, and, and I can tell you, having it on a replacement cost basis for somebody else's stuff, that doesn't happen either. That would be astronomical because if you have a nineteen seventy-three Cessna and it's worth fifty thousand dollars, but you need to replace it with something that's current and re, and replace it, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's not, having it say that it's replacement cost basis and for their, and also for their, for their contents, that it's a little n-not clear the liability coverage for somebody else's stuff, all it needs to be is liability. It does not need to talk about replacement costs or contents in any way, shape, or form. Because the insurance companies on the liability side are gonna cover somebody else's stuff on an actual cash value basis. They're not gonna replace it. And also, you don't, I don't think we need to require anybody to have property coverage on their own stuff at all. And that's kinda how it leads me, is that we're requiring them to have property coverage on their own stuff.
You got anything to add there, Mr. Elder?
Yes, Gary.
I don't know that I have anything that's terribly substantive. I'll sort of echo what Dr. Davis said. We, we discussed this, um, and we've been discussing it with Mr. Cragle, who sent us proposed revisions, some of which are proposed additions, revisions, some of which we accepted, some of which we didn't. Ultimately, the decision rests with you guys. With regard to, uh, the sale of the building, you know, we've got in the agreement as it stands that you have sixty days to negotiate a sale with the town. And if you can't, if that doesn't come to fruition, then you have sixty more days to negotiate with a third party. So you've really got about a hundred and twenty days to get it sold. If council decides that that's not long enough, well, that's okay. That's, that's up to you guys, whatever, whatever number you think is appropriate. That's, that's what we can put into the lease. With regard to, I, I'll just address one of the things that was actually brought up by Morgan in Article One. I think he had a concern that of what's gonna happen at the end of twenty years. What the agreement says is that in no event shall this lease extend for a period of greater than twenty years. I don't see any reason that we would be precluded from entering into a new lease agreement after twenty years. That's just basically saying that with this particular lease, here's the deal. But, you know, th, but by no means is anyone precluded from entering into another agreement after that. With regard to the issue about insurance, I think as, as Dr. Davis pointed out, the intent of this is, and look, I, I don't pretend to be an expert on aircraft insurance. But my understanding of it comports with that of Dr. Davis's, which is aircraft insurance is designed to cover what's going on with that particular aircraft. So if the aircraft is being used or malfunctions or causes damage in some way, that's where that insurance comes into play. I think the idea behind having a separate insurance for the hangar is to basically, as Dr. Davis pointed out, cover an issue where if there's damage to the overall property that results from a fire that occurs within the hangar, or whatever the case may be, that, that there is some protection for the adjoining hangar owners, that there's some protection for the town in case town property is damaged as a result of that. I think Mr. Hardy makes a good point. If that's, if that's just a general liability-
Just general liability.
Fine. I, I think that, that checks the box then. And it, it may be that, that council says, well, okay, well, let's reword that, and we don't necessarily need it to wor, be worded as covering the improvements to the parcel and contents thereof, we can just say carry a general liability policy. And I don't, I don't have any problem with that, so. You know, I thi, I think those are the things that have been pointed out so far. And again, with, with regard to the timeline and the insurance, I think, uh, those are things that should be pretty easily worked out. And with regard to Mr. Dunham's concern about the term of the lease, like I said, nothing prevents anybody from negotiating a new lease after this concludes twenty years from now.
Any additional discussion at this time?
I think it needs to be taken back, reworded, to include the liability.
You can make that, we don't need to, you can make that, uh, part of your motion.
'Cause it's less than, so it's not-
It's less than, so you don't have to have another public hearing.
Right.
What about the typo where it says a hundred and, is that the same thing?
Yeah, I mean, we can fix a typo.
I, I'll see if I can get this. Or are we, are we all done with discussion? I'm sorry.
If you make a motion, then it gets seconded, and we can open the discussion back up, so.
I make a motion that we request approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve dash oh two to rescind the current lease and enact a new land lease for the tenants of the Farnville Regional Airport with the typographical errors corrected as well as changing the insurance requirements in Article Four to read that a general liability policy is required for the tenants. In addition to in addition to the insurance on the airplane. Thank you. Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McCabe, we have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We will move to new business. First item on new business is request approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five twelve oh one, amendment to a CUP approved in January twenty twenty-five to allow an additional two mini warehouses and remove the one acre outdoor parking storage area on the west edge of Perry Drive. We have any discussion concerning this item?
Is this gonna add more light to the area, reduce the light? Because it's not gonna be parking as opposed to buildings, it's gonna, I mean, um, that's one. Will the additional storage units create, uh, more traffic? And, um, and just, does anybody have any idea why this wasn't done this way originally?
Ms., Ms. Ashley Austin?
We also have the applicant here as well.
Let's say the applicant's here, he can probably answer those questions better than I can. Mr. Harbin?
Good evening. Good to see you all again. The reason this happened, we got approval from you all, a basic site plan that we develop a lot of our facilities for. And once we got approval, then we closed on the property. Once that happens, a civil engineer then sends it for a wetland delineation, and that goes to the core, which takes forever, hence why we are here at this time. Once that came back, um, I don't know if the drawings, the old one and the new one were shown to you all, but it shows that the pond is, um, the retention pond was much bigger and it took over the parking area. And so when it did that, we basically had to eliminate the parking because it made the parking, it, it, it had moved the property around because we had to stay out of the wetland. And so what we did, we said, okay, guys, because of that, we can't, it's not feasible to do parking anymore. Let's see if we can take that money and put it into two standard buildings, and so that's what we did. And we basically, the standard buildings face in, so the lighting shines in, nothing shines out. They're one-sided buildings. And that was really the reason. We did not wanna get rid of the parking, 'cause we don't have any at our current facility. And we had people call for RV parking, and that's what we wanted, but it just didn't work for the property, so that's the reason. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Noise-wise, uh, traffic, yes. So it'll, it'll decrease the daily traffic of the landscapers, the RV guys on the weekends, the bass boat guys, that sort of thing. In our facilities, if you guys remember, we typically, on a daily basis, have an average of eight to fifteen. Fifteen's our bigger facilities. This will be the bigger facility, so traffic really won't change. The standard units, um, most of the storage units, people really just come once a month, if that. We have some small business people that work out of them, but, um, it's just not a lot of traffic. So I think it'll pretty much be a wash. The weekends, I would think, would be nice for the adjoining residents, being that the big trucks, RVs, and that sort of thing are probably not going in and out, but I think it'll be a wash.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you. Any additional discussion at this time? If not, is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five twelve oh one?
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve dash oh one.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Ms. McCabe, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next item up is request authorization to advertise the twenty twenty-six Town Council meeting dates. Pretty standard. Uh, first Wednesday is work session, second Wednesday is council meeting. Do we have any changes to the meeting, uh, agenda, or do I hear a motion to approve the meeting dates as advertised?
I make a motion we approve the meeting dates as advertised.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion? Ms. McCabe, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, last item of new business is to request acceptance of the audit for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We had no deficiencies or material issues, uh, in that audit. I believe he called it a clean bill of health, which is good. Do we have any discussion concerning the, the annual audit for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five? If not, do I hear a motion to accept, uh, the audit for fiscal year June thirty, twenty twenty-five?
I make a motion we accept the audit for, uh, the year June twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McCabe, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. So we've had two successive years of GFOA awards. Are we going for three? This, this is the fourth? Are we looking, are we looking pretty good? The, the town has received that GFOA award for its financial reporting the last three years. It'd be nice to get that fourth, so, well done. That concludes new business. Mr. Davis, Town Manager's Report.
Um, yesterday at eleven o'clock, we closed on our bond, and so all monies have been transferred to the town's SNAP account through the Commonwealth. The, uh, just draw your attentions since we're in December, that, uh, come January is the beginning of a new budget season for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. So, um, the plan is that, uh, all the departments will have all of their information to us by the end of January. Uh, we'll give you projected revenues in the first part of February. And, uh, we will begin formulating the proposed budget, and, uh, my goal was to present it to you in March. And then we'll have our normal discussions, uh, work sessions on, on the budget. And from that, uh, part of the, the budget process, obviously, uh, we talked about this prior. We will have our, um, uh, pay study, uh, hopefully completed by mid to late February. So that'll be incorporated, uh, in the discussion of, and proposal in the budget. Town offices, just 'cause of the holidays, to give you all a heads-up, town offices, we follow the state holiday system, um, so, uh, we will be closed on, supposed to be a half a day on Christmas Eve, but I'm suggesting, unless anybody, uh, is opposed, to giving a full day for Christmas Eve. All of Christmas Day, and then, of course, the state also gives the day after this year. So, um, we're really only giving an extra half a day on Christmas Eve to our employees. Unless there's any problem with that.
No, I think it's well deserved. Um, but can we move on to Janu, the next week? You might as well take care of that, too.
Yeah, yeah, we're off, uh, January, we're off on the first. That's, that's the only day the state gives, which is January the first.
Unless the governor comes up with something else.
Correct. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Go around the, the room. Mr. Hardy?
I had a couple of calls about Heard Street and how it's been a while. I know it's cold now, we can't get it, obviously can't get it paved now. But it's been repaired for several months, and I know, like I said, I'm sure that's on the agenda for first thing in the spring.
Actually, if, uh, if, if, if it do, if we do get some warm days and asphalt plant, we've had this conversation, make some asphalt, then we plan to pave all three that we had to replace in those, so that'd be Heard Street, Blanton, and, um, Winston.
And I'm guessing we didn't pave any of them because we thought it would be best to just do all three of them at once?
Yes, it's more costly to get a paving company to come out three different times than one time.
Mr. Hunter?
Uh, just happy holidays, everyone. Be safe.
Mr. Yolan?
Uh, the same thing. Happy holidays to everybody. Um, also, thank you, Stephen, for removing the big pile of gravel at Wilkes Lake. That was a bit of an eyesore and took up some parking spaces for a good long time. Thank you very much for that, sir. Thank you very much for the service to the town during this, uh, last couple win, oh, ice storms, snowstorms, I guess you would call it and everything. The streets look great today, fantastic. And, um, thank you, everybody else, for coming in here tonight, participating, and, uh, giving us your opinions and your thoughts on what we decide up here, so. Merry Christmas, have a great evening, and thank you for coming.
Mr. Dwyer?
I've received, uh, quite a few people who were just thrilled with how quickly these streets were cleared. I think it was pretty amazing, too, so thank you.
Mr. Reed?
No, just happy holiday to, to all.
Ms. Amos?
I have a couple of things. Public Works, thank you. I was just telling, um, Public Works Director how cold it must have been going in that hole with the water running. Grateful for all our guys that do that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Also, congratulations to the Farnville Police Department on achieving accreditation. Again, that's not an easy task to do. And Farnville Police Department Dispatch are definitely a stellar organization that we can be proud of. They're a leader in the, and I'm very proud of all of them, so thank you, and thank you to Sam Bowles and Chief Ellington. And Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy New Year.
I'll echo those sentiments. Uh, accreditation is a, is a big deal, so congratulations on accomplishing that task again. Uh, it's a big lift. And, uh, you know, it's the end of the year, you get reflective at the end of the calendar year. Very grateful for, uh, all the, uh, the folks who work, Public Safety, Public Works, and for the town. Uh, and I'm grateful for this body, uh, as we continue in these times of somewhat uncertainty and divisiveness. It can feel a little tough sometimes, uh, to, to be in public service because it's just an interesting time to do it. And so, uh, I'm grateful for all of you for stepping up and doing it. Uh, I'm grateful for the citizens who impart to us their wishes as we serve. And, uh, I just wanna remind everybody, uh, as I do annually, that we're, we're rolling into another election year. Every year in Virginia is an election year. Uh, and as things get ratcheted up more and more every year, I just like to remind people to extend a little grace to each other. We're all in this together. We rise together and, uh, and know that, uh, I'm grateful for the authenticity with which this body attempts to do its business. It's not easy. It's not easy in these times, and it's not easy being a citizen in these times, uh, either. It feels like costs of everything are up, and we contributed to that a little bit this year. And that, that's a hard pill to swallow, um, but it is where we are. And 2026 comes. We move into a new year. We have a budget year. I say it every budget year. I wish more people participated in the budget process. It is the thing that shows what your government cares about. It's where it's going to spend money. Nobody shows up for budget hearings. Please tap in, participate. I'm so grateful to see so many folks in the audience tonight. Like, it really is democracy this republic is participation. So I'm so grateful to see folks here, and I hope folks are tuned in online. And I urge you once again, as we roll into budget season, to participate. This is your house. We are people you elected. Let us know how you feel. Appreciate you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. We're going to go into a closed session. I don't believe there's any business to come out of that. So if you're not here when we come back, once again, have a wonderful evening and travel safe. Mr. Dwyer, will you read us in, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Farmville Town Council convenes in a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia in accordance with the provisions of paragraph A dot 29, a section 2 dot 2 dash 3711, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms of scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll see you on the other side of closed session.
Yeah, because somebody hit everybody.
I got hungry, Adams. I started eating. The turkey.
Is that just a bag of beef jerky?
No, thank you. I don't eat turkey.
So.
I don't know. I can tell you what beef is expensive right now.
Really?
I went and bought a pound of amber. It was like on sale for sixty.
All right. Mr. Dwyer, will you mind reading this back in, sir?
Whereas the Farmville Town Council has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Farmville Town Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Farmville Town Council hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements are Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Farmville Town Council.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. McKay?
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
If there's no other business to come before this body, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Mary, thank you.
Yes, thanks for the chocolate, Mary.
Bye.
Somebody's phone and jerky.
I've got, if you remember.
You're supposed to be at the airport guy.
That's where Dr. Willis was sitting?
What?
Did Dr. Willis and his attorney? Did you give him? Jerky?
I did not give him the phone.
We were trying to figure out if it might have been theirs or if like Ian or Jake was behind it. Might have said it.
Is this all I need? Just the sheet?
See you, Dan.
I'll be here tomorrow. Don't worry.
They might come back, they might come back for it.
I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here. The what? Yep.
Well, somebody, somebody's there.
That would be Donald.
Brian needs food. Other than that, I don't know of any other.
Donald, I had to.
Donald's going?
No, Donald's not going in.
Oh, you're not.